My Recomplaining Commission dated February 16th, 2002. And would you please rise for the pleasure?
I am glad to be here. Senator Tyler of the United States of America. And to be part of this family, which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. You can state that.
Yeah. Brian Devlin.
Here.
Chair Matt Osborne.
Here.
Richard Rolzinski.
Here.
And Peter O'Brien.
Yeah.
I'm going to let the record show that Amy is not in attendance yet.
All right, general public comments. This is time for public to comment on an issue, on it regarding an issue or a matter that is not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Public comment is not intended for a question and answer period, period of conversations with the commissioners or the city staff. Commissioners, when recognized by the chair, may ask questions to the presenter, but take no action at the time. Is there, I'd like to open it for public comment. Amy have a comment? All right, closed public comment. Staff and commissioners comments, members of the planning commission may make brief announcements, reports, or request staff to report to the commission on any matter at subsequent meeting. So commissioners, do you have any questions?
I don't know.
Nothing? No.
No.
Staff, yes?
Yeah, just a brief announcement. And Arthur, if you could pull up the website really quick. Just want to again, this will be coming up at each meeting. I'll just make some announcements on the general plan process. So the city of Waireka is updating its general plan this year through the year 2044. So it's a 20-year plan. We have the scoping sessions from your previous meeting up there. And then we also have, our visioning survey is ready to go. So you can access it through that button on the main page. And if you scroll down on the website, please. You scroll down. We also have a list of upcoming events. We are going to host a public open house this Saturday at the community center from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. People are open to come. We're going to have some open stations to go over the visioning process in our survey. We're going to talk about some housing options and then go over parks and recreation at the open house. And then upcoming, we're going to have a virtual presentation for existing conditions report. It's a very technical portion of this that looks at the existing conditions. So we'll be doing that on March 8th. So we also have an e-newsletter that's available and people can sign up for that on the website. I believe I added all the planning commissioners by default, just so that you're kept in the know about what's coming up for that. So please feel free to encourage people to attend those, really contribute. The visioning survey is a really important aspect to creating the 2044 vision that you'll review as planning commissioners. And so will city council. So please encourage people that you know to take this. Because if people don't speak up now, we're not able to take their input in for the process.
Do you have like a count of how many people are taking the survey and all that stuff?
We, we.
At this point?
We, we just launched it, I think on Monday. So I think today I checked and we've only got about six people so far. But again, we're starting to get the outreach materials out and it will be open through the end of March. So we're hoping to really get that outreach going. It is a pretty short survey, but there are a couple of essay questions really asking for in-depth input from everybody. So we really highly encourage you to do that.
Who was that targeted to?
Everybody. So, oh, oh, in terms of the outreach?
Yeah.
So we're doing like a whole push. So we're doing yard signs. We're going to be doing ads in the paper. We're going to do announcements like this at public meetings as much as possible. I know on our Facebook page, we've posted information on it as well. So any other suggestions we'd be open to if we're not hitting something? But we're going to try a number of different things. We're going to do the newsletter and the utility bills as well.
So the survey or people who saw, maybe noticed that signed up for the survey?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Not just like blanket email push?
No, yeah, we, we only, it's only just the people who have chosen to sign up for the newsletter at this time. City council, planning commissioners. But again, we're going to try a number of different media to get people to take it while it's open for the next month and a half.
That was my last question, how long?
Yep. And we always have more time. I mean, it's just March 31st would be great to get some of that rolling. So if we do happen to not get as many people taking the survey as we'd like, we can do focus targeting on different core groups. We do ask some demographic questions, so we make sure we hit a lot of different people. So yeah, so please, word of mouth is one of the best ways to get it out there and get people interested. And we do encourage people to also be honest in their responses. I know a lot of people want to be nice, but that's okay if you're not positive. Just be honest with us because we want to make sure we're taking care of everybody. So thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Great, thanks. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and not controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the commission wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the public.
Amy Fernandez, join the meeting.
An item. So approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on January 19th, 2022.
I'll make a motion for minutes of.
Okay.
January 19th, 2022.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, great. Let's see, public hearing. So let's go on to number one or A, CPU 2021-46, to do gas station and convenience store public hearing. Staff?
Thank you.
So this is a repeat item. There were some modifications to this. So the planning did a similar item related to this project in August of 2021. Since then, the applicant has modified the project, has basically scaled down the project to remove the liquor store, excuse me, remove the liquor store at the corner of Montague Road and, and North Main Street and replace that with a six-pump fueling station. And in addition to that, move, basically move the liquor store and a convenience store over into the medical building, which is immediately adjacent to the north. Staff has gone through and found that the project is exempt from CEQA under a Class 1 and Class 2 categorical exemption, which basically is existing facilities in replacement reconstruction. We've provided a standard conditions of approval in the proposed resolution that are pretty much the same as the ones previously approved by the commission. And it's, it's a very straightforward development. We don't expect any resulting additional noise levels, no additional lighting levels that are not already pre-existing on the properties. And the use itself fits the commercial tourist zoning and district area.
Great. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Or any questions about the project?
I have a question on the, since the plan.
Yes, we do have the applicant here today as well.
Okay. On your existing building, on the original plans, it was going to be two-story. Is it still going to, going to make it, are you going to enlarge that building or make?
It's, it's going to be the same. There's additional, I think about 600 square feet, but not, not two stories.
You're not going to go to the second story, okay? Also, is there enough parking? I was adding up the parking spaces with your employees and everything?
Yes.
You have enough parking places with the handicap and everything?
Yep.
You think staff would not?
Staff might.
He's actually one over the required amount.
Okay, good. Okay. It's the only questions I have.
Any other, anybody else have a question?
We do have Amy on the line as well now.
All right, we're on a number A on the agenda.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My question is, what is the plan for the existing building that Puerto Vallarta? Is that part of it?
No, so Puerto Vallarta is on an adjacent property that is not involved in the project itself. So it will be existing. There is a shared driveway on Montague Road, which will be entrance only for both of the proposed developments.
And have they been notified?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure they know of what's happening, okay? And they don't have any kind of, of problem? Will there be, will there be shared parking?
No, so the, the development itself is providing enough onsite parking for their own needs and, and so would not need to use Puerto Vallarta's parking for their future use.
Okay.
Yep. And so just to review it, so both items that we're hearing tonight, all public hearings are required to be noticed in the newspaper, a minimum of 10 days. So we end up doing it for two newspaper postings. And then we also notify all property owners within 300 feet of the proposed development. So they've received both a letter and then there are notices placing at least two newspaper circulations.
I do have one more quick question. The boundary line between Puerto Vallarta and your service station where it's going to be, is there anything that either one of you can put a fence or anything up dividing that?
There's no plan as such, but since it's a shared driveway, so I think if, if the need be, I mean, we will kind of, I mean, address that at that one of times.
So one of you could put it up if you wanted.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
All right, any other questions? Commissioners? Do I need, yeah, go ahead, Peter. Oh, no, okay. Do I need to open up to public comment still? Okay. All right, I will open up to public comment. Does anybody have a question? Comment? All right, closed public comment. What do you guys, you guys have any other concerns, questions, commissions?
I think your question about fences. If somebody put up a fence, doesn't that create an issue over there?
No, there's going to be a separate entrance.
No, there's two separate entrances coming out.
It's kind of, it's kind of hard to understand from the picture.
It would be easy for them to go over the line into the other one really easy, but it's divided right there.
Well, and one of the issues too is the, the driveway is on Highway 3, which does have additional Caltrans requirements. So if someone did put a divider between the parking lot area, they would have to, yeah, they would have to avoid impacting any of the traffic circulation on the properties. So there is no risk of having that fence encroach upon the entrance. So if you look at on page 16 of your packets, there's a, a kind of a site map and you can kind of see there, it's really not conducive for the installation of a fence. The only thing that I could logically see happening there would possibly be some curb that would basically just divide those angular parking spaces that are basically right on the property line. But in terms of fencing, it would not benefit either of the uses to place that there. It would just impede traffic flow.
One of the reasons I brought that up is if they put a fence, like a three or four-foot fence, if you're in your convenience store, you wouldn't be able to see the gas pumps and so forth.
Yeah.
All right, well, anybody have any other comments? Commissioners? Can I get a motion?
And there's recommended motion language. Page seven. In bold at the top of the staff report is recommended.
So motion to approve planning commission resolution VCR 2201. The resolution of the planning commission of the city of Waireka, California, approving the conditional use permit of the Sido gas station and convenience store project and adoption of Class 1 existing facilities and Class 2 replacement reconstruction exemptions under the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA at assessors parcel numbers 057473210 and 057473240 by title only.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great.
Start building.
Yeah. It'll look nice there.
It'll look great.
All right, let's move on to the second agenda item, number B, revocation public hearing for CPU, CUP, sorry, 2020-05, living quarters at the Waireka truck stop. Staff?
Right, thank you. So this is a little bit different. I didn't find any recent revocation hearings in the past, so this might be a little bit of a new process. So the planning commission issued a conditional use permit for the Waireka truck stop to convert two of their offices on the second story of the truck stop into a two-bedroom residence for workers who are working at the trucks, truck stop itself. The city of Waireka received a complaint. Well, we received confirmation of a complaint from the Siskiyou County Public Health Office that there was an overcrowding issue and multiple people sleeping in the upstairs quarters. And so we responded with the Siskiyou Public Health Department to do an onsite inspection and discovered that there were several bedrooms that were installed in the second story of the building without a building permit. Upon going back through the administrative record that we had, Felicia here found that we did not ever get a building permit to convert those spaces to a residential space. The staff report begins on page 21 of your packets. And so doing due diligence, the, the planning department found that the conditional use permit failed to meet conditions 1 and 4 of CUP 2020-05 and have subsequently scheduled them for a revocation hearing. So when we get anyone who is in violation of their conditional use permit, any of the conditions, it's an automatic scheduling of a public hearing before the planning commission to understand the situation and to make a determination on whether we should do one of three actions, which I outlined for you on page 23 of your packet. So the planning commission tonight may choose to take no action and uphold the previous CUP, which is in your packets as attachment number three. You may modify the permit, which is what the planning department recommends and has put into the proposed resolution. Or you may revoke the, the conditional use permit, in which case we would recommend moving that to a future meeting so that we can prepare a formal resolution to make the findings for a revocation. So again, we went upon a secondary inspection of, from the building fire and code enforcement departments. We found that it had expanded to exceed the previously permitted building permit to include eight additional rooms and unpermitted bathroom and was missing the required facilities for residents. Since we've made contact with the applicant, they have been working in good faith to correct all of the issues. And we did get an update from Leslie who's here today, yesterday, that our building inspector was onsite yesterday and they are beginning to remove all of those in a satisfactory fashion and returning it to the previously approved building permits. And so we are working with them in, in good faith and they have shown that they are, are trying to meet those conditions. And so that's why we recommended to add additional conditions to just further clarify that it is for a two-bedroom apartment with a maximum occupancy of six people, which matches the California Building Code occupancy standards and to just clarify timelines for the submission of these materials so that it's done in a timely manner this time around, just to make sure that we keep up with the use itself. And this, the potential revocation or the expansion of the conditions would not be a project considered under the California Environmental Quality Act because we cannot find any reasonable foreseeable direct or indirect impacts on the environment from this type of use because it's an existing facility.
Yeah.
And then again, just to reiterate, so this, this was noticed similar to the last public hearing. So a notice was put into the newspaper and a notice was sent out to all properties within 300 feet of the use to notify them of the hearing of possible revocation. We did not receive any written public comment to date on this item.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. When is it anticipated that the building, the truck stop will be in full compliance with the changes?
We already removed 80% of the construction. We have just a few, one bathroom left. So it's already removed and it restored to the original position.
Right, so what, what time?
By Monday or Tuesday.
Oh, so soon. Thank you.
We're just waiting for the plumber to just give us sign off that we didn't move the bathroom.
And then it will be two. Am I correct in saying it will be two?
Next will be, it'll be all done by next week, for sure.
And that will be four persons maximum, is that correct?
Six.
Six people maximum.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Right.
Under, this probably, just, yeah. My, I don't know, or, or zone codes, but, uh, commercial highway. Is there a residential use in commercial highway? Or is it all back to C2 and then C2 is second story only? Is that why we're permitting residential use in?
Residents, yep, residents on a second story in the, this commercial highway zone is allowable with a conditional use permit. So they did go through the proper procedure and they did get a conditional use permit for that residential use. What happened after that is there was miscommunication and lack of follow-up. And what happened was is they just installed the bedrooms without going through their conditions of approval, which requires them to get a building permit to convert from a commercial to residential space.
And then my, my question, then. It seems like it must have been built up with the bedrooms and scale that it was built up to. Can you tell, tell us what that use was? Who, who was occupying all those spaces and why? And then why is it not going to be a problem going forward when this changed? So I, I don't understand why we had eight bedrooms. One bathroom.
Originally, we have like six employees that work in Taba over the period. We have now a group of eight. So they are sleeping two in a room. They decided to, they needed their each room because of the privacy. And then we add one room, then we added the second room, so that lead to adding six rooms. So now we removed everything, restored to the original position. The second story tend to use with the liquor storage. Then we find out that is too heavy to be transported by the employees. And we tried to hire a company to do a lift, to lift them up and down and it's.
So what's, what's going to change with the number of employees that are looking for space to?
We rent to that quarter in the RV park now. We have three apartments in the RV park.
Yeah, and to, to clarify that, when we did red tag the second story, we did issue, basically, what happens is, is when we have an unsafe living situation like that, the city can choose to have the landlord rehouse those people to a comparable unit. And so that was the first step that we took because we were concerned about ingress egress because a lot of these bedrooms did not have windows. And so if there was a fire, we were very concerned about people getting out. And so the applicant did re-home all of those people into legal housing units within a couple of days of that issuance. And so in the future, they would only be allowed to have those six maximum people in the two bedrooms under the CUP.
And how, how often are we expected to take a look at that to make sure?
So we did put conditions of approval is that they will have to comply with us to inspect at any time. And then once they get a certificate of occupancy for the residence, we may do inspections with a 24-hour notice because there are some privacy issues with residential uses. So we can come in with a day's notice at any time.
And we don't have any problem with that.
And that's going forward?
Yes.
Going forward.
Yeah, our building inspector to date, since we went through the code enforcement process, has visited the site, I believe, four or five times.
Any other questions?
I think my questions fell in line with Commissioner Devlin's questions. I couldn't hear him very good, but I do, based on the answers I, I heard, my concerns were just the assurance that we weren't going to have the same situation. But I like the fact that we are able to inspect in the future. I guess I'm, I'm, I'm wondering the health and safety situation. Was it something, were there children living there? Is there going to be, you know, something that we should be concerned about in the future with, with cleanliness there? I, I don't know. I mean, it just, it just concerns me that the, the disregard for the rules in the first place, it concerns me that we're not going to have continued disregard. That was my concern, but I, I appreciate his answers. So, but I would like to have that noted.
And to clarify, we're just talking about the city rules for this through the planning commission. The county health inspector has their own set of rules and they have their own set of guidelines that they follow as well. And so reporting to the health department is on a continuous basis. And we also are able to accept if there are any future complaints or concerns about that as well.
And just to also clarify your other question, there were no children or families living upstairs in the second unit. We did confirm they were all adult workers. It's not to say that a, a family couldn't live in that upstairs apartment, but again, with the added inspection conditions and then also ensuring that all of these items are, are up to code moving forward, we felt as a city staff, we would be able to continually monitor the situation and effectively move forward in a safe manner.
Thank you.
I have a question. On this new plan, who exactly is going to be living up there?
Employees, we have six.
Employees up there?
Mm-hmm.
They'll be spending the night up there?
Yes.
Okay. Originally, when we approved this, I was on the, I was here then. It was approved only for the manager or possibly the owner when they came to town. That's the only it was approved for at that time. But.
You remember that?
Sorry. But anyway, that's why I was wondering what's going on with it. Now it's going to be employees.
I don't think we can tell, tell them who can live there technically, right?
It, it would be, you, you could put that in your conditions of approval. I would caution against that just because it's very difficult to confirm or deny those. And it's hard to go into a space and be able to ask people that and, and enforce that. It's very difficult to do that.
So in other words, they can have truck drivers come in, have three to each one of these bedrooms and if they decide to.
So they could not do it as a short-term rental. It, it has to be a long-term residence.
What classified as long-term?
Those living in a space for more than 30 days at a time.
Right.
And again, we, we did confirm when we were there that they were all workers for the restaurant.
Do we know who the complainant was?
I did not get the name. We, we got it based on a referral from the county.
Any other questions? Should we discuss the possible three options or?
You do have to open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Open to public hearing. Is there any comments, questions? All right, closed public hearing. Should we go back to and forth between us about the three options or?
It, it's up to you. I wanted to lay out your options just to be transparent and have you kind of move forward and understand what your options are. Staff's recommendation has, is to modify the CUP to include these more strict conditions of approval with timelines and very clear direction in terms of how many bedrooms, how many people. And this was based off of conversations between myself, the building department, code enforcement and fire. And we felt that this addressed a lot of the issues that we saw up there. And again, you know, just with the conversations that we had with the applicant, I think there was a genuine miscommunication between the city and the applicant. It's not unusual for something like this to happen where someone gets a planning permit and believes that they're ready to go and go do what they want. And so it's just going to be up to us to make sure that they do go through the proper building permit process, that they do make sure to, you know, get their approvals from the Siskiyou Public Health Department because it is a residence on a commercial food production site. There is, as he was saying, as we were saying before, a higher level of scrutiny because of that. You can't have, for example, the residents cannot be accessing the commercial area at any time. And so those things would have gotten caught if we would have continued to have a good line of communication and ensure they went through that building permit process. Because when we do the building permit, a copy of those automatically gets sent to the Siskiyou County Public Health Department for comments and their side of their health code enforcement.
Thank you. Commissioners? All right, Amy?
Can I just confirm? Hi, sorry. Can I just confirm that you believe that this is a result of miscommunication and not just a blatant disregard for the, the current conditional use permit?
I think there could have been a, a, some of that in this is, is just basically adding on without getting the proper approvals. I think that does exist, um, but I can't necessarily say which is the greater issue or, or what has a greater percentage of the fault here. Um, so again, uh, I've seen this happen in a number of other cities in, in a similar circumstance where people get a planning permit and think they can go forward. Um, we're actually dealing with several other properties that are in a similar situation. Are you still there, Amy?
I am still here, yes.
Okay, sorry, I just said our connection was unstable, so I didn't want to lose you. Um, so we have had this situation happen. We've actually got several, what we thought were simple questions and turn out that people have been operating, um, illegally because they have not gotten proper permits. Um, so it's not unusual. Um, so I, I can't say to what percentage is, is negligence or what percentage is miscommunication. Um, that, that's kind of up for the commission as well. Um, so again, you, you do have the option to revoke the CUP and you may do that. Um, and we will prepare a resolution to make the findings for that. Um, like I said, we, we approach this in trying to work with people as best we can and, and try to be understanding with businesses moving forward. Um, we also take the perspective of, we do have a housing shortage for people um, and do see some value in having worker housing for these types of uses that are affordable. Um, so that was just our approach. But again, it is really ultimately up to the commission and your recommendation. And we will move forward with whatever you feel comfortable with.
Commissioners, uh, what other projects here in town do you know of that have a room available for employees?
None, I don't know.
No. I don't, I don't know, I have to off my head.
So this, this, we're talking about a special situation for one business.
But anybody could do it. Right?
So yeah, under the code, so for example, if any other use that has the availability for a residence in the second story, they could come and request a conditional use permit.
In a business?
Yep.
Well, actually, there is a couple of businesses in downtown that have.
Second story.
Now, yeah, on minors.
So for example, if the Arby's did want to put a second story resident on their building, which is CH zoned, they could come to the planning commission through the conditional use permit process for that. It is, I'm sorry, sorry, there M one, never mind. Um, thank you. But yeah, so a, a similar use could do that in the zone. It is open for them to do that.
Well.
Hi. And we did provide the housing free of cost. The major reason because we cannot find a, a Indian cook locally. So we had to bring them from the different city and they do need a housing when they come from, uh, like San Francisco or other towns. So that's the one of the reasons they do need it.
Peter, did you have?
Yes, I, I, I must admit I'm slightly uneasy about, uh, I understand originally six people were authorized. I, I understand perhaps occasionally, you know, per weekend, an extra couple, two people. But it says here determined that there was a total of 11 rooms that were not permitted and housing approximately a dozen or more people. I mean, that seems to be driving a cartos through the rule to me.
Not, not 11 room, it was a six rooms.
It was, it was 11 based on our system.
Were you counting closet and everything in the room, but it says six bedrooms.
A dozen or more people.
No, we have a total of eight employees that live there and they decided to get their own rooms. So that's what lead to building more rooms for each employee because they need a privacy and they have their.
But the report does say dozen or more, 12 or more, 15, 20?
We only have eight employees that live there, they still work there. And we remove all the rooms restored to original condition.
Well, the city and county performed an inspection and the total seems to be a variance with, with your information with respect.
I think, um, what you're, I mean, it feels blatant.
It does.
Okay, but I also believe that the staff can fix this problem. So I'm actually leaning more toward going with the recommended issue.
Well, so am I. I'm, I'm leading to modification of the permit with, with. There, there needs to be more inspection, it appears. I know you said the Siskiyou County, that they have their own rules and regulations. So they'll be presumably keeping a close eye on it.
Well, how many, how many agents, I mean, how many different departments would be involved in actually inspections?
Um, well, in this circumstance, we coordinated with Siskiyou County Public Health. Um, the city, OSHA, um, was also notified of the issue. The alcohol beverage control was also notified of the issue. Um, and then, uh, Fair Work and Housing Practice was also contacted as a coordinating agency. So there are several that would be inspecting the facility because of the mixture of uses. So in terms of the most frequent inspections, it will probably now be the city, uh, building department specifically will probably do the most inspections.
Because that's what needs to be.
Yep. And then, uh, our code enforcement officer will probably be there quite often as well. Um, and then again, the public health will have to inspect and, and look at that. So public health is typically onsite every year. Um, but again, you know, that, this is something that we will keep a close eye on. If, if you do choose to go forward with a modification, we will keep a close eye on it because we understand that there was history of an issue with that.
Right. Well, Commissioner. What do you think, Richard?
I can't go on that story.
And you're leaning for the modification?
Yes.
That's what I am too.
With reservations.
So there would, when, in this situation, I wouldn't know which way to ask for, uh, you know, ask for, uh.
So any member of the commission, since you do seem to be split on it, I would recommend someone making a motion that you prefer. If you do want to go with the recommendation, I would just recommend reading the language that's presented on page 21 of your packets. And then those who do not agree with the motion may vote no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, geez, Richard.
What, what, what's your, you're going for revocation, right?
Yeah. I'd just rather see it complete and done before I did anything else, only because of the past experience.
I'm still at the revocation, but.
Yeah, I, I don't totally disagree with Richard.
I don't either. I don't either, but I'm going to go with staff.
If there's further inspections and that they're bound to be out of compliance, does that come straight back to revocation?
Correct.
Strike one, not a strike two.
We are good there. We're open to any inspections anytime. We have no objections.
Amy, do you have any, anything else?
Well, one thing that I couldn't hear Commissioner Devlin, but I think what he said, and it's something that I was entertaining as well, was I would like to have an inspection ensuring that everything has been returned the way it was supposed to be before we vote on it. Um, because we're, we're amending the conditional use permit to allow for the two bedroom residential unit, correct?
Yes, and so to.
Which is what, what should have been done in the past, right? It was just something that had kind of dropped off.
Correct. And just to, to reiterate, uh, we are requiring that the entire facility be put back to the original approved building plan prior to allowing a new permit application. So they will have to return it to that previous approved plan before we will consider the changes.
And then they have to start that whole process and build out.
Correct. Correct.
And the, the changes, what, what are they proposing to change outside of that two bedroom residential unit above?
They are not. It's just basically, uh, the amendment to the CUP just adds more strict language. Um, and add, um, a different, uh, uh, conditions to reimburse the city for the cost of enforcement through the whole process. Um, clarifies how many people may be in that unit. Um, but yes, uh, it, the building department under the California Building Code has already issued a return to previous state notice and people have 30 days to comply with that. And so we will get compliance with that. Um, so again, if the commission does, um, approve a CUP and does not revoke, we will basically work with them to remove the illegal structures back to the original approved plan. And then we'll basically move them forward with their new residential building permit application to convert the space properly.
Okay, and just for the commission, I, I am leaning towards following the staff recommendation.
All right, then, can I get a motion?
I will make the motion. I'm not sure what's, I'm looking on page 21 for the motion. Um.
So it should be right under recommended action at the top, right?
Okay.
Line.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve planning commission resolution PCR 2202, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Waireka, California, amending the conditional use permit number 2020 dash 05 for living quarters at the Waireka truck stop.
Can I get a second? A second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Note, Richard.
Thank you.
All right, let's, uh, move on to new business. Discussion, possible actions about our meetings and the amount of people. Did we ever find out why that they reduced it and what was that reason?
Well, Alicia's going to give the staff report. Page 36 of your agenda packets is the beginning of that.
All right, so Felicia Sims, Assistant to the Planning Director. Um, so this is the discussion and possible action of the planning commission 2022 meeting schedule. That is our first one. Um, our regularly scheduled meetings are consisting of five committee members meeting on the third Wednesday of each month, starting at 6:30 PM. And we, per the Brown Act, we have to post the agendas in a public place within 72 hours. And, um, they have to be accessible by the public. And they are also posted on our website. Um, we have attached as attachment A, the schedule for 2022. This is able to be amended if the commissioners recommend that action. Um, this can be amended for the dates, the times and the frequencies of meetings if preferred. Um, and then we also canceled the December 21st meeting as scheduled, as that is the week of a holiday where most staff, commissioners and the public are not available. Um, so we do have the requested action as city staff is requesting the direction on the planning commission regular meeting schedule. They, planning commissioners may approve the current schedule as is, or we can adjust the 2022 planning commission meeting schedule tart, start times and/or adjust the planning commission meeting schedule dates and/or adjust the current 2022 planning commission meeting schedule frequency. So this is an item that you may discuss as a whole. And just like the last item, um, the recommended motion is someone can make a motion as to what they would like to do. And then those who agree, second the motion and agree. And if you do not agree with what the motion is, you can deny it or say nay.
Well, I wouldn't mind moving the time to 5:30 if that works for commissioners. Amy?
5:30 would be fine.
Are you okay with the day as well?
I'm fine with the day. I am fine with the frequency once a month.
Once a month.
Will 5:30 work for staff?
Yes.
Yes, staffly is typically done working with their eight to five jobs at 5:00 PM.
Is, is there, um, I'm, I'm surprised that it went, it couldn't be less than a month. Could you do it quarterly? I mean.
You could, but we have a lot to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, okay, it just seems weird that it could be something.
Monthly is typical if we were a larger city with a busier schedule. Bi-weekly is actually very common.
Like the city council.
Yeah, but I would not recommend anything more or less at this time.
This seems to be a perfect time.
Because we do also want to be cognizant of you being people.
Volunteers.
Volunteers and people and you have jobs and hobbies and family. And so we don't want to take too much of that.
Lives.
Yes.
Additionally, you are able to call special meetings. Special meetings must be posted within 24 hours of the meeting. So you can call together and recommend to staff to set up a special meeting if anything comes up that is required, an urgency meeting that cannot wait. There are also emergency meetings, but those are rare for planning commission. Those are more in the case of city council, but also are an option.
How about closed?
You don't typically go to closed session because, yeah, I mean, the only time that I've seen it happen, I have not personally been part of one, but I have seen certain planning commissions discuss with the city attorney, possible litigation. If you have concerns over something that's happening, um, we can do that. But we don't typically take planning commission into closed session.
Great, can I get a motion for?
Like over the, uh, five to seven people.
Well. So can I get a motion on the, the meetings, the scheduled meeting monthly and the time?
I propose that the, uh, future planning commission meetings should be once monthly, a Wednesday of each day of the week and at 5:30 PM instead of 6:30.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, okay, that's great. Thank you. All right, and then the, um, reduction from seven to five.
Yeah, so we, there was, um, attachment A is ordinance number 860, which is page 41. And that was an ordinance of the city of Waireka amending the section 2.20.020, the membership appointment terms and vacancies of the Waireka municipal code. And so that ordinance was put into effect in December of 2020. Sorry about that. Um, and that changed the number of seats from, for the planning commission from seven to five. It also served to say that only residents of the city of Waireka are eligible to serve as a planning commissioner, um, with a commissioner having a term of four years. And the mayor is the one who appoints the commissioners when a vacancy opens. Vacancies typically open when a term expires or in the case that someone decides to leave their vacant, their seat early. Um. And then again, upon the end of the term, a commissioner can either stay to renew their seat or they can vacate the position. And then we have to have the vacancy posted for 30 days to allow new applicants. And then again, it goes to city council where the mayor appoints the new commissioner. Um, the planning commission may advocate to the city council to make changes to the number of seats on the planning commission as well as the membership qualifications. Um, the membership qualifications can be modified to include business owners. People who reside outside of city limits, but spend the majority of their day within city limits. Those who live in city limits, but reside, you know, do the majority of their part outside of city limits. And, and so the requested action is there's a few different, um, questions on page 40 that should be, um, discussed between the commissioners. How many members of the planning commission are desired? How would increasing the number of planning commissioners affect planning commission meetings and decisions? What would positive and negative impacts of increasing the numbers of the planning commissioners look like? Um, what attributes, characteristics and qualities are desired in potential future commissioners? If the number of planning commissioners is increased, should the membership qualifications of future? If the number of planning commissioners is increased, should the membership qualifications of future memberships be changed and how so? I would also like to state that you can have members who don't live within city limits be on the commission as long as they are not the majority of the vote. So we can go up to seven and have those who do not reside in city limits be on the commissioners as well. Three of those seven, they just cannot be the majority vote.
And I think we used to have a few, if have a business in city limits, but they changed that, didn't they?
Yes.
Okay.
There was not history that I was able to find. I believe it's, I believe it was part of the ordinance number eight sixty to amend everything. And it was just discussed, but I could not find a resolution or other documentation to support why.
So you, you don't even know why they went from five, seven to five?
They, all it was, was a recommendation by the city council that was approved.
Okay.
And-
I asked a couple of people in the city council, and they didn't know why they changed it. In fact, two of them didn't know they did change.
I don't know. Do you guys see a benefit in actually having more?
Yes. Well, here's, here's my thoughts, and I, I know you said you want seven, so you, there's, there's-
Or likelihood of a quorum.
No, no, no. The reason why is in the last twenty-nine years I've been on here, I've had numerous, not just a couple, but numerous calls at home, making sure I was gonna attend. Because otherwise, they weren't gonna have enough for quorum to make it, because they had two people out of town. And one guy was sick, and then, then they said, a couple of times, they said, another reason we really need you there is this business wants to get started. And if you don't show up, he's gonna have to wait a whole nother month. And I've heard that about three, four different times. And then we, we've had people sick, we've had people not, not call or let us know they weren't coming. And a couple, two, three times, one time we didn't have a call, a quorum. That's, that's what our eye can see, is you're gonna delay people from getting anything approved if you don't have a quorum. And all you have to do is have two people not show up or call in sick. Quorum, so.
During those years, did you have Zoom, have the ability to have an Amy here, she's not here?
No. Usually it was a sick or they both went out, people were out of town.
Right.
Gary had operations, maybe had a lot of operations that year, and some other people had operations. There's quite a few times that, uh, we'd had seven, you haven't been able to have a meeting, so.
Also, I want to make sure that everybody knows that there is that five-hundred-foot rule for commissioners. So if you are within the five-hundred-foot radius of a proposed project, you have to recuse yourself.
We do that quite a bit.
Yeah, Waireka is small. I also believe that the, one of the reasons why it went from seven to five was because two vacancies happened at the same time for seats, and there was no applicants. And it was brought to the council as this is an opportunity, since we don't have anyone applying to lower our number, so we can still have a commission.
And, and I didn't read that part, I'm sorry, but about what they, all the information on that. But if it, if we can't fill two, I mean, can it just stay open? Or is there a, do we have to get two?
So per the Brown Act, we have to advertise vacancies for as long as they exist.
Okay.
Yep. And they, we basically renew every thirty days, we renew the vacancy and continue to roll that until we get two, two more people.
Well, the city council only has five. They seem to rub along quite well.
Do they have to have a quorum of four every time, do they?
Three.
Three, okay.
Same thing. And you made a good point, Brian, about Zoom, you know, in the old days, of course.
Well, yeah, because you can be away and still be a phone call away.
Yeah, Zoom was really only created in the pandemic, really.
Yeah, and we're not sure how, you know, everybody is discussing that right now in the public sector, how that's gonna continue and how that's gonna evolve post-pandemic. So previously, you could call in via the Brown Act for those meetings, but you had very strict posting requirements. So you would have to, for example, if I was traveling for, uh, city business or something, because I'm on the city council for Dunsmere, if, in the previous rules, if I was going to remote in, I would have to post an agenda on my hotel room, and I would have to allow people to join me if they wanted to join that meeting. And so it was a little weird, and so that's why a lot of people didn't do it. Yeah, that's a real thing. Uh, we did actually have one person, um, at the City of Mount Chasta posted on a conference door at a hotel so that people had adequate notice and could come in. So with the new pandemic, you don't have to do any of that. You can just remote in as long as a majority of your legislative body is not remote at this point. So as long as a majority of you are here in person, um, you can continue to do the hybrid. But we don't know how that's gonna change. We're hoping that it shows that this opens up a lot more participation and that the legislature will make permanent changes to the Brown Act to continue to allow hybrid. And I think that's the direction they'll go, but we don't have a for sure yet for that.
Well, Matt mentioned a few weeks ago, he's gonna be doing some traveling. You know, with Mount Chica's, I'm-
Well, I mean, a lot of the traveling I can do by Zoom, though, too.
Okay, if you can do, because I'll be traveling in April, but July, I don't know. But I didn't know, that's another reason.
I'm not opposed to additional members of this.
I can go either way, to be honest.
And then you want to make sure you have me on anyway, because I don't, sold my business, and I don't, and I don't live in Waireka, so.
Yeah, so technically you wouldn't meet the current standards.
I know, see, they told me all the years, as long as, I have rentals, I have a rental in Waireka.
Arthur, you have something?
Yes, Arthur Boyd, um, city clerk. So, uh, your concern was making sure that you had enough people to attend a meeting, is that correct?
I have a lot to do, yes.
Yes, so I just wanted to, uh, inform the commissioners that if your total number of members is five, your quorum is only three people. If you increase your total number of members to seven, your quorum goes up to four. So it might make it harder to have a quorum to have a meeting. That's all I wanted to let you know.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have a question after this, once we hash this number out, on the attributes. So we can actually set, like, qualifications?
So ultimately, it's up to the city council. But what we're doing here is you can make recommendations to them, and obviously, uh, city councils should be listening to their planning commission in terms of membership and, you know, to gain diversity of, of interests on here.
We don't have anything as a restriction now, I mean, as far as qualifications or anything, besides living in the city limits.
Yeah, having a residence here, yeah.
Have to speak English as well.
Yeah, basically. I would, I would like to see it changed to people out of the city limits. I think they can add, I think you brought up a comment that they can add a different perspective.
So, um, I have experience with a couple, two, two planning commissions where they allow people who are in the sphere of influence. And so there's two major boundaries for cities. There's the city limits, as we know it, which is the city proper. And there is what's called a sphere of influence in California, which are properties immediately adjacent to the city that have a special boundary around it, and these are people who are eligible for annexation into the city. And so most of the commissions that have an outside city perspective still require those people to live within that sphere of influence. Because theoretically, they could be eligible for becoming residents at some point. But they live close enough where they're still, you know, the, Waireka is still their main city that they're affiliated with.
How big is that sphere that you're talking about?
Um, I can get you guys a map for future meetings, and you, you can take a look at it. They were just updated. So there's another quasi-judicial branch called the Local Area Formation Commission, LAFCO. Um, and they are basically the deciders of what those boundaries are, and they help with annexations between the county and the city to make sure things are equitable when you do annexations. So I can bring that in next time, but it, it's several thousand acres, it's so, it's pretty large. So, I, I mean, so you can imagine the south side of town is all eligible for annexation. Yep, out towards Montague as well is quite, is included in that.
I just live a couple miles.
Yeah.
I go by the truck stop, I get gas there quite often.
I, I, do we want to discuss this more, or, I mean, what do you guys?
Is there any time during the year where you change it to seven, if we feel, see down the road that it could?
You can revisit this as many times or whenever you would like.
Well, seven under. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we keep the commissioner count the same.
Chair Osborne, we do need to take public comment.
Oh.
And I don't think, and I don't think we did take public comment on the scheduling either. They are considered action items. So they do, yeah, sorry. No, that was my bad for not catching that.
So is there any public comment on the, uh, what do we do first? Oh, the meeting agenda?
The schedule.
Schedule.
Times or anything.
Okay, close it.
Yep.
Um, any public comment on the commissioners, or what do you call that?
Membership.
Numbers, membership. All right, close it.
Just want to make sure.
Okay. I didn't think we would have to open that to public comment.
So yeah, is, so under the Brown Act, anytime you're taking an action, even if it's something informal like this, you do have to give the public the opportunity to make a comment.
Okay, makes sense now.
Is there also the option for them to push this to another agenda item?
Yeah, you could table this to your next meeting and give yourselves more time if you'd like, but I apologize, Commissioner Devlin.
I just, um, based on what the city clerk said, I just think that if we move up to seven and we need four for a quorum, that's just gonna make it more difficult than what we have currently. And I think with the advent of Zoom, and I understand that, you know, the use of Zoom and teleconferencing is unknown, but I, I do suspect that we, there are changes are gonna be made, I, I just suspect that. But I, I feel like the, the, um, what we're trying to make work is, is gonna be even more difficult if we, if we bring on two more commissioners. That was just all I had to say.
I kind of see that now, too. I mean, I think five is good.
Five is good.
Okay.
I didn't know we could change it, so.
Yeah.
So if you can change it, that's, I find it hard.
Yeah, seven might be a little omeedle, Dave.
Thank you, clerk.
Do you want to, um, make the motion that we keep the membership count of the planning commission the same and visit it sometime later if needed?
We can always add that on an agenda, right?
Anytime you want to revisit.
Yeah.
Along with the qualifications as well.
Yeah, because I definitely would like to look at that a little bit more. Maybe we can get some more information next meeting about the, you know, options and what you guys see is, or would recommend, you know, that would, and how it would benefit expanding, you know, all that.
So we do have the one motion.
Okay, oh, sorry.
A second.
And you should vote on that, and then we can table the membership quality to the next one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then just basically, you can make a motion to table the membership qualifications to the next meeting.
A motion to table the membership qualifications till the next-
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. All right, future agenda items. Obviously, there's no possible action, so we don't need a public.
No, no, yeah, uh, future agenda items are just, thank you. Are just, uh, basically to inform you guys of what's coming up next. And if you have anything else that you'd like to place on the next agenda, I will say, um, March sixteenth is gonna change a little bit. We will still have the annual progress report. We have discovered that a couple of our core or ordinances around rezoning, conditional use permits, and variances need to be updated. They have not been updated since, um, the sixties and eighties. And some of the text is, um, now in conflict with case law, and so it is not legally defendable in court. So we need to just refresh those. So those will be-
So is there any benefit we can take now to get in, in before this?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
No, basically, we have to enforce the rules as they are now. Yeah, so, uh, so we'll probably be moving the objective design standards to April, and then we'll be bringing those to the March. But again, uh, this is just to inform you guys of what, what should be coming up for the next meeting, and these are always tentative and they could change. We don't anticipate any applications for CUPs on, on this next one. We did meet with Mr. Franklin, who came to your last meeting for the motorcycle shop. Um, and we are working with him to come up with a compromise and, and changes to the code that could, uh, you can consider for accommodation. So we're working with him still.
Perfect.
He was gonna repair them, they're all slightly, no, okay.
Just, just small sales.
Yeah.
All right, um, this is a weird, this agenda is so different than the last. I guess I'll adjourn.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Amy. Hope you feel-